Yeah.
I don't hear it.
Recording progress?
Yes.
Yeah.
Back in my day.
I have.
Is it recording progress? I didn't hear it.
Don't have.
We're in.
How about, uh, with this, can you unmute Brenda for us? Brenda, can you hear us? Or Brenda, can you unmute yourself? I'm putting it in the chat here. Chat disabled.
Who's talking?
Oh. So we got some of the audio.
Can you hear me?
Thirty seven.
Hello?
Brenda, can you hear us now? Go back to your stop video and see which. There you go.
Yeah.
Although. How about your audio? It's got on speaker. It's got going now. Uh, no, the, go back to that. Go to the second one down. Echo cancelling speakerphone. Oh, no. Up. Selective speaker. One more. There you go. Now the red light came on. On the.
No.
Yep.
You, but. So we just gotta turn the speaker up on the owl.
For half way, yeah.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
There we go.
And you're. Are you?
My audio. Your audio.
I mean.
All right.
Yeah.
Brenda, can we hear you now?
Okay.
Must be her mic.
You hear me?
Yep.
We classes, they will not. They have the opportunity. Put guys around.
Really? Can you mute again, Brenda? Okay, thank you. All right. Today is Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The time is now six oh two P M. And I'd like to call the regular village board meeting ordered. Uh, Mike Capers present. Donnie Kern present.
Chris Moreno present.
Caleb Garn.
Brandon Chrome.
Chris Doan.
And I believe Josh was going to join us by Zoom.
Josh, I can play it.
Oh, yeah, Zoom user. Okay. All right. Call the regular bill, those board meeting order and. And the conventions. What do we need to do the way of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Well, but it's supposed to be on agenda items, but um, we're gonna, we're gonna let you talk here, but the senior.
First of all, my name is Margie Metzarth, and I live at seven ninety-eight Plum Tree Lane here in Somerset. I've been here for years and years. And I wanted to just say a couple things about the A D R C, which is the Aging and Disability Resource Center. Um, they've got a lot of benefits that they offer for us folks who are sixty and over and also disabled people. And I did a little look, looking at the census for Somerset, and I believe between nine and ten percent of our residents are seniors fifty-nine and older. So it's an important place. Uh, Sharon's got some papers here. I was gonna ask her to distribute that. They do, they, uh, they do publish their own little newspaper that tells us what's going on in the area. And they've got, um, nine different nutrition sites throughout St. Coey County, and Somerset is fortunate enough to be one of those. Uh, nutritional places. We meet up at the Somerset Town Hall. Usually, uh, Monday through Thursday, and they, we serve lunch at eleven thirty. There's a little word in the papers here on page thirteen about Somerset only. And we're open on Monday through Thursday. And anybody who wants to, that's age sixty or older as well, could just come in for lunch. We do ask that people call twenty-four hours in advance. And I think when this was first set up, they thought that us seniors that lived alone were probably not eating properly or getting nutrition, but it's, it's turned into very much a social activity. So we've, we've increased our timeframe and we open now from nine until one. And usually our morning group is there mostly just to visit and socialize with peers and people in our own age group. And it, it's a really good time to find out what's going on in town and what we're doing and not doing right. And I could mention along that same line, the village of Somerset did contribute, uh, money to us. Couple of years back so we could buy a commercial coffee maker and we have the coffee pot on at nine o'clock. Anybody who wants to stop in and join us for coffee, we're happy to see them. Um, our meals come from Ready Randy, so we've got good people preparing them. Uh, the A D R C buses them to our site. They furnish the van and they also furnish a van driver. So that if we have people who are not able to get there on their own, they'll go out and pick them up. Stay there with them for lunch and then drive them back home. And I'm pretty confident that most of you folks don't make the sixty and age group in, in order to join us there, but if you've got a neighbor or a friend or family member that might enjoy that paper, I'd encourage you to pass it on to them. Um, also, this, this van is available for us for outings and activities. If someone needs to ride to the dentist or the doctor's office or the, the clinic up here, they'll pick them up and see that they get there and get back home. So we've, we've got a number of, of good activities coming up on that line. Um, also, we try to make a point to eat, eat out at one of the local restaurants the first Friday of each month. And, uh, I know not just a cafe, uh, sports one, we've been at a number of our local places just to support local business also. And one of the other things that's in that paper that I didn't realize until just this last year is that A A R P will do taxes. For any of our group sixty or older without a charge. So if you have to file federal income tax and don't know how to do it yourself, there's a benefit there. Well, I guess I mostly in summary want to say it's a, it's a really good newspaper. It's got a lot of information about special things that are coming up. Uh, we usually try to provide, we play bingo on Wednesday morning. We do a dice game on Thursday morning. And then we try to provide some type of musical entertainment at least once a month also. So it's a good outing, the good chance for seniors to get out there and mix with some in their own age group. And again, I want to thank the village board for contributing to our coffee maker. I think it was last year or the year before, Camilla came down and gave you the good speech about what you could do for us, but I guess that kind of sums it up. It's a really good place. And if you could share that paper with someone that would be interested, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I went up there a week ago Friday. You know, and had, uh, pizza with.
It's, it's a fun activity. It gets us out and off. I think, uh, when COVID hit, a lot of our people were not able to get out. So we got home delivered meals also that the van driver is paid by the A D R C and he would go out and deliver meals to anybody that was shut in and couldn't get out. Good service.
So it's the village board. If we decide we can donate some money, uh, there's fifteen, twenty people there on, on that Friday.
Usually they were between sixteen and twenty summers in that group.
Um, I thought about doing like a hot luck with wings and stuff like that on a Friday.
That'd be really great.
We could all pitch in and do something, I think. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So next is the approval of agenda. We're switching.
We get the chat fixed. Um, Brenda put it on, the chat was off. I didn't want to interrupt, uh, the presentation there, but.
You turn the chat on?
It's not. Sorry to have it on.
She's still, Brenda's still got it. She's cats on.
Okay. Got it on. Got the old.
Check it now.
It was disabled on my.
I turned it on.
Good deal. All right.
Good.
Good catch, Brenda.
All right. Uh, so this month we're switching to consent agenda. And this was Tasia's idea, just to help push our meetings along. Uh, basically some things like the minutes that we've already kind of should have gone through, water and sewer bills, uh, like the planning commission where it was an extra territorial thing. Um, and so if, if any board member sees something in the consent agenda that they're not aware of and would like to remove it from the consent agenda, then they can do so. And then everything else that doesn't get removed would pass by on the consent agenda. That makes sense, I knew. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out of the consent agenda to discuss? Or is everybody okay? Uh, making a most, passing all the items on the consent agenda?
Caleb Garn make a motion to pass, uh, items A through G. On the consent agenda. First one, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Do you know, no in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes. New business discussion, possible approval, procedure of contacting village attorney. And. Was it Brandon that you put this one on?
Yeah, so, um, I put that on after I had went through, um, some of the attorney bills. Um, I just kind of found that a lot of people were contacting, uh, Paul, just like we have a lot of con, like double contacts for like wheelhouse coffee and instances such as that. And I did speak with some of my other, so I work with a guy. He's on the board in Star Prairie. And then I talked to one of the eldermen in Richmond, and they said they kind of have, uh, a setup to contact the attorney. Just so we're not incurring a lot of extra fees. Um, so basically, I think was my, what I.
Yeah.
Is it in here too? Okay.
There, you know, I wasn't ready for this consent agenda. Everything's so fast.
That the email dated February first?
Yes, yeah. Um, so yeah, I have a designated point of contact. Um. Will serve as the liaison between the board and our legal counsel. This individual responsible for channeling all legal inquiries, concerns, requests, thereby streamlining communication, avoiding duplicate efforts. Uh, in my rec, in my email, I recommended Tasia as the point of contact for village matters involved during development. Uh, predefined threshold for intern, attorney involvement. So we need to develop clear criteria aligning the circumstances under which attorney involvement is warranted. By establishing these predefined threshold for legal intervention, we can prevent frivolous or redundant inquiries. Uh, regular review and reporting. So as part of that, uh, we just need to implement a systematic review process to monitor these attorney bills and expenditures to make sure that we stay on track. Uh, training and education. So once we have that new, once we have that in place, we'll have to train and educate ourselves in the new system. Um, so, um, with that, uh, we can equip ourselves with requisite knowledge and it can empower us to address routine legal matters, um, that we could handle internally. And then, uh, we maybe possibly could explore alternative fee structures. Um, that just fix fees or retainer agreements. That was just some stuff I kind of looked up. But yeah, I think there's room for improvement for us on how we go about, um, bringing the attorney into our matters. So basically, I just wanted to have a discussion about that.
So I guess, I guess like the comment, I mean, I have no problem if you guys want to decide a procedure for doing that. Um, my only concern would be that if a board member were to contact me, you know, outside of that procedure, um, I don't want to hang up on. So. Other than that, what I typically see is contacts from clerks. And contacts from town chairs or village presidents. And it's more unusual to get contacts directly from trustees and supervisor, although you. Um, but that's not the norm, I guess.
I think a good process, if we were to do something in regards to that, would be with openness and transparency is if we were sending emails and or communicating as a board, it would be nice to just get that to the, like Tasia, so that she could communicate them or, or blind copy or copy the entire board so that we all know who's talking. And, and there's not duplicate emails on that. And so if you, if you copy the board, then there's no, well, why would I ask that question? Because then the response would be to all of the, the board then, you know. So I think right now there's, there's been some, I look back at some of the bills and, and, uh, you know, from the previous, uh,
In question.
There was, there was certain things that were, you know, I'm like, wow, um, you know, maybe it would be nice to have known that. You know, I didn't ask the question. I didn't go research, uh, you know, this to in depth, but if, uh, if, I think that's one thing that we could possibly look at doing is just if we're going to be contacting an attorney that we, we make sure that we either get it to the clerk and the clerk blind copies all of the, the board. So we're all on the same page when, uh, when the attorney responds. That would save duplicating, uh, that. But, um, as far as putting the procedures.
I agree.
So your motion?
Oh, I'm not into emotion. I, I'd like to, I think that this is a good, be a working document and I, I'd like to table this and get it through to a, till we get to a point where we can actually get a, a good, I, I think there's good things that we can put in all the way across the board. But, um, you know, you had some good recommendations and what's worth one here too. So, uh, maybe we put it to, uh, you know. Additional, uh, you know, continue to, uh, talk through this and, and work through this to get, uh, where you're at. Pardon?
Develop a plan.
Right. Uh, you know, I mean, it's a good start and process, good worthwhile having a conversation. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think, um, that we do have, you know, I, I agree with, uh, even the, the attorney here is, hey, if somebody calls and has a question on something or, uh, sends an email, if they notify the rest of the board, then there wouldn't be a need for a duplicate and, and, and that would be a, a good area for training for the entire, entire group.
Yeah. Another thing I just wanted to highlight is we just need to be cognizant of it. You know, every time we send off an email, it's, you know, thirty-seven bucks.
Twenty, 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 uh, point two zero, I think is what I've seen on, on majority of those emails. So.
Yep.
Two, ten, two tens, twenty percent of an hour.
Yep. How much to discuss? This, the code, code of conduct, that's like all struck out. It probably wasn't, probably more than that, but, uh.
Yeah, I was then.
No, I think, I mean, did this.
I write that. Can you look?
I draft.
Can you check out if, see if some of the villages have any policy that we can look at?
So.
Any further discussion?
I guess just on that. Um, Robert's just implemented a process where it takes two board members to agree to contact one of their professionals, whether that's an engineer or anything.
That makes sense. Same way they do to put it on the agenda.
In order, you know, because they were concerned, I guess. Well, they're trying to save money.
Yeah.
You know, so before the clerk can send out information or whatever, um, it takes two board members to agree to do it.
So for the meantime, should we all agree that we'll at least send our communication that we want to go to Paul, to Tasia and show blind copy the rest of us? We agree to that as a initial first step?
And, and think we can look at this in the future and see what some policies and from other places instead of just implementing something without really doing some research.
Well, this is this, so this is will effectively cost save right now just by us agreeing to it. Just as a board, we don't have to do a policy change. We can just say, we're gonna send our emails that we want to go to Paul, to Tasia, and show blind copy everyone.
Yeah, I'd rather get some more information before we make any kind of motion or. You give me that?
Well, just so you're aware, you have caused the village an exorbitant amount of money.
I would, I would hope as the village president, I've had some costs incurred, like raising the taxes. Point five percent? You're having ta, raising tax conversations? Interesting. Okay. Any further discussion or can we, uh, move this table and move on? Discussion, possible approval, staff pay app seventeen and eighteen.
So, yeah, we didn't quite make the, uh, public works agenda for this, so that's why it's being, uh, brought directly to the, to the entire board this evening. Uh, pay application seventeen is for four hundred thousand five eighty-seven. Four thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And it's for work that was completed in November. Yeah, we finally got all the support documentation we needed to, and we are recommending this time. It's been there to the left.
They will make motion?
And then. I'll imagine, I don't know if you're gonna go at the same time, but eighteen is, uh, that's for work in December. And that amount.
Ninety-six thousand two oh five.
Thank you.
What does that leave us left up complete on that? Because we're kind of in a less than a six month completion time now. For those, uh, that project.
Yeah, so they've, uh, completed today. Um, let's see. Yeah. Eleven thousand. It's better twelve grand to finish.
Twelve grand to finish?
Yeah. And then we also have retainedage of five percent too. So you have, you're also holding, um,
Publicized.
Forty-five thousand dollars retained.
I was looking for that on this schedule here. Is that, uh, um, uh, number five, right? Forty-five thousand?
Forty-five thousand, yep.
So this is pretty much gonna wrap it up with the exception of about twelve.
Well, and then the forty-fives to that.
Well, yeah, so that's the punch list stuff, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Although, although I'm not a fan of it not going through committee, but I do appreciate they're getting the work done and stuff like that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, recommended model pay application seventeen and eighteen. Pay application seventeen in the amount of, uh, four, where did it get it at?
Right here.
Yeah, there's four hundred thousand five, four hundred thousand five eighty-seven and ninety-seven cents. Pay application eighteen, amount ninety-six thousand two oh five fifty-six.
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Then. Discussion, possible approval, village contributing to Bruce Larson Day of Giving. So this was, um, put forth by Chris Marino and myself. Uh, in a bent touch with Ms. Larson for a little bit and just, um, trying to come up with ways to honor, uh, Bruce's memory and you're talking with Rocky and her. Um, even cited the best way to do that is for the village to contribute to uh, the Bruce Larson Day of Giving, which gives to a scholarship which goes to a local kid. You're talking here. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars, uh, to the Bruce Larson Day of Giving.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
I have questions. We did, uh, something similar to this with the, uh, foundation. In the past, I believe it was a thousand dollars, correct? Uh, last year. With the community foundation, I believe, uh, uh.
I think we gave five hundred to the Somerset Community Foundation.
Was it five hundred or was it thousand?
It was five hundred. I think some of it was to seniors and.
We collect it every year, five hundred dollars to the senior center. So that's it. Um, my question would be where is that thousand dollars coming from? I don't, I'm not opposed to finding it.
That, that was my next question.
I think you can take it, hopefully you can take it out of the savings from the, the snow. Not having to remove the snow.
I don't. That's a.
Okay.
When's the day of giving?
And, and what would the money be used for? Again, I mean, I love some Carson, so definitely a scholarship, put the scholarship for a local kid.
Last year we did something on foundation. They were running, I remember that. But I, I want to say at the, yeah, that it was only like five hundred bucks.
Is that acceptable to take village taxpayer money and give it to scholarships for good?
Well, if you're gonna use it for public, I think they suggest. You can, and it's gonna be funneled through. Um, you know, possibly they're gonna have to come up with.
When is Bruce Larson Day, the Day of Giving?
I believe it's, uh, near the end of the month. I can't exactly here. You did that.
Cause I know the senior center was up and gave a presentation, asked for money too. No, as, you know, if, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to it. It's just what thresholds, what parameters are we as a board to establish for something like that? And that's where I was like, well, we, we did something last year with, uh, uh, the community foundation, I believe. And I would be amicable to doing something equivalent to that. Um. Otherwise it could get kind of crazy with asking for money. And a lot of people will be here with their hat in hand.
I'd rather put in my own money than take back taxpayer money for a scholarship, is my opinion.
Want us, Somerset United to be a part of it?
You know, five oh one C? Yeah, we can do that. Here, but that's not part of the village board. Roll call vote. No, any further discussion on it? Roll call vote, Donnie?
Well, can we make a, like, instead of going a thousand, can we do five hundred?
I, I would be, I would be okay with that. I, I wasn't, I was gonna vote against it because it wasn't equal to what we had with the other one, but five hundred I'd be okay with.
I'll amend my motion five hundred.
The second.
Right.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Donnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Caleb?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Brandon?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
All right, five hundred dollars for the Bruce Larson Day of Giving approved.
I would like to go on record too. I will throw in additional hundred dollars towards that. Uh, so on the Day of Giving, so that he'll have six hundred dollars coming.
Self, it's more than the next one, three dollars. This. Um, discussion, possible approval, line of credit reduction, winds up in River Hills, preferred builders. Chuck?
Yeah.
We still, yeah, we, can I back up for one second? Point of order, Mr. Jim, we still didn't determine where that money is coming from.
Correct.
And I, I'd like to at least, you know, now that the vote has been done, I'd like to at least establish where that money is coming out of before we just willy-nilly move on to the next agenda item. Okay, so.
I just told Andrew we should just take it out of community development, but probably.
Do we have room in there for that?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
It probably is.
Is a motion in order for that?
I don't make a motion.
No, I'm, I'm asking. Do we need to make a motion to make that? I'll, I'll make a motion to, to take the five hundred dollars out of the community development fund.
First and, or second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Yeah, discussion.
Thanks. All right, Chuck, you're up.
See, now I was waiting for that, so. So as you may recall, River Hills Development, um, you know, the, the security that they originally posted was two point seven million. And, you know, there are loud reductions from time to time and about a year and a half or two years ago, you did reduce that down to the ten percent. So you're holding two hundred and seventy thousand dollars currently in security for River Hills. Uh, we recently received today, as a matter of fact, the notice of municipality of completion of public improvements uh, from the contract, or from the developer. And, uh, they're seeking, you know, they want, now that the project is substantially complete, there are some punchless items remaining, but more or less it's, it's done and, and they're looking for a further reduction in the amount of security that you're unfolding. And, um, you know, we're recommending that we reduce that to fifty thousand dollars. And, um, we're also suggesting that the warranty period be backdated to, uh, October ninth. That's when the, uh, the wear course of pavement went down. Okay. And what you have is basically a one-year warranty on everything but erosion control and the roads. That's a two-year warranty. So in effect, the warranty period be holding that fifty thousand dollars until October ninth of twenty twenty-five.
Very concerned with them developing that, um, Southernland Street there, the east side of the street there, where they haven't really built any homes yet. There's been quite a bit of wash out there and they're gonna have to bring a lot of dirt, even with those being walkout homes.
Brandon, is that in River? Where's, River Hills?
Yep. Is there any concern there, Chuck? You know, specifically what I'm talking about?
Yeah, they have some top soil that they, yeah.
It's some, um, it's a biomatic.
Yeah, that's what I said.
There's not some of the punchless, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that, and that's what that fifty thousand is.
Well, that's what we're keeping the fifty.
That will cover that?
Seventeen thousand dollars. Some backyard drainage issues, a driveway to repair and some topsoil.
Could be addressed like you mentioned.
Okay, that's what we're keeping. They wanted it down to forty, we kept fifty.
Okay, all right.
And any, any approval, I should say, is contingent on, on a couple, a couple of items as well. Any, any approval, I should say, is contingent on a couple, couple of items as well, uh we need lien waivers. Um and there's a exhibit in the development agreement for um lien waivers as well as a letter from their engineer.
Yeah, what's the status of that? The letter from the engineer and all of that stuff up and winds out?
Well, winds up whole separate, so let's get through.
I thought it was, are we, okay, so we.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, there are two separate development agreements.
So, so this is just, this is.
River Hills right now. Uh we're not making any recommendation on why it's separate on, over there.
Okay, cause they said winds app and River Hills, I thought we were talking to two.
Yeah, I could see where the confusion lies, but yeah, and we actually have about seven hundred thousand in security. So that'll, you know, but that's separate and that's staying in place and that's not being reduced at this time, right?
River Hills, they got a lot of their punch list done on, I think they just had a couple of concrete things they couldn't do until weather got better, right?
Yeah, they're also had the.
You think that forty, fifty thousand of the sewers and stuff?
Yeah, they're down with their total work.
You had some, you had some drain, uh some uh water?
Yep, seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's, that fifty thousand will cover it?
Yeah. Seventeen thousand dollars from the contractor. They says they submitted that from Albright, so have a small driveway repair where they paved over a pot bottle or something, and then we have some um soil, topsoil would be put in place, so.
Your area, you drive through a lot more than any other.
I've gotta live out there, uh uh Brandon.
They're gonna come to you before they're gonna come.
I know, they're gonna come to me no matter what, uh I'll make a, since we're aware of those issues um and everything else is addressed, I would uh Brandon, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the line of credit reduction for River Hills to forty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand, if you got the extra ten.
Contingent upon.
The lien waivers and uh the letter from the engineer, contingent upon that, I'll second that.
First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. So we got community, we the winds app one nine. No, we don't, winds up, we don't do.
We're not. I haven't seen a letter for that yet.
Oh, okay, right. I was also confused, Donnie, just. Discussion possible approval ordinance for fiber, future fiber optic. Yeah, so this one came out of public works, um there was a lot of work that went into this one initially, it kinda we started on the path that we were wanting to do our own municipal internet, we ended up, I ended up having a meeting with Northwest really get down to the root cause of the issues of just not having internet right away and those issues you have when you first move in. They were very agree uh agreeable to the fact that they would want the fiber optic in at the time of build because they themselves don't lay their table when they come back. They have to put in a temporary line and then they have to pay a contractor coming back in and put it in later, so it's a pain for everybody. Um I also did talk with uh Capstone about this in regards to this ordinance, and they were also favorable to this as well because they can do this all at once. And really the intent of this is to treat fiber optic the same as we do as small utilities. Uh we're living in a the twenty-first century and we need to have internet just as much as we need power or any of that, you know. Um that really is um the crux of this, so we wanted to change uh fourteen one five nine and fourteen one six nine and I did recommend it. By public works.
Yeah, and I believe, I believe that we're echoing kind of what your recommendation was on that, right? It was just to modify that language in fourteen one five nine to reflect the addition, or is it one or the other?
Well.
It crosses okay the television and replaces it with high-speed internet, right, three places on the order, that's the only change.
This is the existing one.
Sure.
The short one, and this talks mostly about burying things underground as opposed to the second one, which is a brand-new one. Which talks about, you know, requiring the developers to install, now it's, it's limited to new subdivisions. And my concern initially was you require it for anybody that's gonna build a house if they have a lot in the older part of town that's not served. Uh that may be an issue for, so really this is for new subdivisions going in.
But it's, but it says residential construction projects. So if I, if I had a, an, an addition, but I didn't have fiber. I I'll give you, for example, if if we did some work at uh Maple Grove, which is the inside, am I required to put in?
So if under part B there, applicability, it says, what's gonna apply to new residential construction located with the new subdivision?
Okay.
Good enough for me. Issue that you're talking about there is to come up. And it requires it, as you said, not just in the street, but the lateral to the building.
And there is a um an option to weave by village board um with verification by the inspector, so that option is in there. So you, you, you were, don't have a problem with fourteen one? By the way, I'm just saying.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it, you went back and forth on those and.
No, and again, it comes recommended through the board, I just had to verify that, that one question through legal because you weren't at the, you weren't at the meeting, so.
That was my, one of my concerns too, but it's fine.
Brandon, try and make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen one six nine and the amendment to fourteen one five nine. First and the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Both same side. Here is. Yeah, discussion possible through all spring park improvements. Um so this one's another, this was another one that came through the public works committee for a while now, we've had a fundraiser out there going to try and buy signs and also buy uh also get types and type of buckhorn control or poison ivy control and goats had come up as kind of a solution to that, it was fun, uh it was green, um and also it could draw some people to the parks, I met with a fellow uh Logan uh who runs Toad's My Goats and he said that we could get on the schedule and also that he had a brand-new uh herd of goats, they were baby miniature goats. So not only are they hungry, but they are cute. Um so the quote here is for Toad's My Goats and this would approve us to do that as well as uh purchase the signs and the signs would be uh not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars and also to use the three hundred and
Forty-five.
Forty-five dollars that we've raised through um charitable donations up to this point.
What else?
Oh, oh, and once we have the signs up.
Gotta keep going.
Once, yeah, yeah, so uh now, not only um now, once we have the signs, the signs would, if we sell, we've also put in place um sponsorship agreements, so we have those agreements already written, we've done that previously. So we can sell a sponsorship to each hole for five hundred dollars for three years, that ends up being nine thousand dollars. So that would um almost completely pay for Toad's My Goats and for the signs. And then we also would gain nine thousand dollars every three years, um and we could use that, that would go into the general fund um which could be used for anything with the river. And I have made some progress, I talked to Chayton uh SMC this week and he said he'd buy one for sure, Donnie. So. I haven't got the check yet.
One of, one of uh eighteen.
I know, hopefully, but surely.
But there's also more to that motion than just what you got here in front of you.
Yeah, I, you wanna talk about your park side of it? No, you could, I I I only wanna take the grandeur, is there, was there anything else the grandeur had?
Pickle table?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted a picnic table or not.
Nope, nope, that was all my ask was Toad's My Goats and the signs.
So what's your, what's your amount here? Seven, seven, eight, five?
And then the signs will not exceed twenty-five hundred.
That's over ten grand.
Yes, it is.
Our motion was ten grand, ten grand, ten grand, kind of, well, we said ten grand for La Granger.
So twenty-five hundred includes the three quarters size from what you've already raised?
No, it didn't. So. Part of it. Happy accident, I did not do that on purpose. When I got into the, your, end of your public works meeting and Donnie said, read this, and I actually, I thought it would be a joke to spend eight thousand dollars on goats to clear our to clear our park. Like, once I found out it wasn't a joke, and I called, I come for the next day, is there a cheaper way to do this? And Bob, if you can kind of speak to the conversation we had?
Um, yeah, you had wanted some alternatives to that, so um Garrett Valil and then there's a company under River Falls. You know, it's mechanical, um so it doesn't use goats, but I think I'm in with a grinder attachment, um forestry mower, it's called. And he's, was, he was the one that did the disc golf order, uh town. And he's two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I, I totally understand that it's not the cheapest route, that wasn't the goal in this, the goal is to draw people out to our parks and to get them out there and have something fun for families to do and draw people into disc golf. And there's also already been conversations between uh Caleb and myself with the champions that they would were working on a a potential event if this gets approved uh for disking with bulk of goats.
I can't think of more windy thing to do.
I can't think of, I can't think of spending eight thousand dollars on village taxpayer money for goats and and see if uh if you do it as a fundraiser, get the money first, you know, putting the cart before the horse, I can see doing that, I just, I can't. I'm going to vote no on spending eight thousand dollars in taxpayer money, it'd be every year or whatever for goats, not every year, it'd just be this one time. Buckthorn and all that stuff, whatever, the goats clear away, grows back. Right, so. I would much rather have the village look at either, I already know with other people, or we do have the the trail cats that could use, uh we could look at to see how much an attachment would be to that.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna use a trail cash.
I do too, it's too late.
We would have to get a hot cat. All right.
And I don't wanna tear up the land like that, I don't wanna do that to the for the goats.
You know, may I speak to that? First glance, you talked about this and we've discussed the back and forth at committee on uh whether or not, you know, mechanical versus goats and and Brandon made his his comments and same thing here tonight, uh but I'm concerned though, on page one, it says for the project to be, and I just kinda read through this a little bit um a little bit more, it says for the, and this project to be effective, it's recommended we do several treatments over two to three years. Two treatments per year depending on conditions, my question is, is, are we gonna have to do this more?
We could potentially, well, we haven't done it ever, so anything would be better than the state the course is in right now.
Right, but if they come in for one week and they've fenced it all off and and in one week's time, it's not cleared. There's, I mean, there's no real guarantee that that this is going to be completely emptied out, with a trail cat, at least we know. Or, I mean.
It'll come back at the trail cat.
No, I mean, with the mechanical, at least we know it's clear.
It's still, it'll still come back.
Well, but I'm saying we got it done once, and what if they, in one week's time, it doesn't get all cleared out?
Well, have you seen the, the nature center, they did it and they, it still looks great down there in Richmond, the Sather Nature Center? They did that a couple of years ago.
Bob, you said two hundred bucks an hour? How many hours did they, did they give you ballpark? He didn't give me, so that was what he would charge the town. Um, so.
What did you estimate, made it out, he said like maybe three thousand dollars to do the county day?
Well, we've got six and a quarter acres here, um two days. Sixteen to twenty hours, I would estimate.
Sixteen, sixteen to twenty hours roughly.
Yeah. And I can certainly go back and speak with Garrett and discuss this more, um.
Sixteen would be thirty-two hundred dollars. Yeah, like I said, it's not just about doing it as cheaply as possible and I want it's not about, you're gonna completely change that park once you go through there like that, it'll never be the same.
So North Hutton has used the goats in their park, we may wanna give them a call to see what they care, I know, like you said, but.
There's other, there's other place, other place, uh you know, huh? No, I'm saying there's other companies.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Any, any thoughts of us getting uh multiple, multiple quotes? I'm not opposed, unopposed to it, I, I support it in the.
Yeah, we just gotta get on the schedule is the only thing, but.
The kids.
I'd be okay, maybe we, for all intents and purposes, if there's more companies out there to do it, maybe there's a opportunity for us to get a couple of different bids.
The goat folks are kind of like shepherds, so they're a little gypsy-ish, so this was the one I could get a hold of as fast as I could. So, um.
I think there's one of goats too.
Yeah, and I mean, like, we are something, we are going to be selling sponsorships and also.
Just can't touch the fence. So is this something that we wanna just table and so we get more information?
We'd like to see other bids.
Brandon, you wanna get us more bids and come back to the next month?
Sure.
But get some bids for the mechanical part of it too.
I don't want to bid for the mechanical part, I don't want to stay taken out that way.
There's seven board members here.
Well, the public works, we'll discuss it at public works.
What's a whole board meeting?
I get that, but that's not.
They've been worm show, you're a public work, that's all works. So. All right, stable. And discussion possible approval, meeting attendance by building inspector.
You know, in, in finance, we're discussing about uh establishing guidelines for uh building inspectors, we happen to have those, the minutes of that, uh what that motion was for this meeting.
Um.
It was a specific ordinance change.
If you want with him at the meeting, it would be noted on the agenda.
Right. That we would know, it would be requested by, it would be upon request and noted on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So that he's just not showing up for a meeting and and asking for a payment. Well, we have to make the change in the ordinance.
Under planning.
Right, and it was under the planning commission and I thought we'd have you got that planning commission um language?
Or emails? Roll up somewhere.
It's stated in there, building inspector is required to be at all planning commission meetings.
Correct.
And I believe it was changed, and that's why I was trying to remember what the actual recommendation for modifying that ordinance change to uh reflect that it would be upon request and noted.
We did not change an ordinance that finance, you guys just said you was making.
We were recommending the change of the ordinance.
Recommend.
Village Board.
Putting something on the agenda. I don't even remember having a an ordinance.
No, we didn't have the ordinance, I just said it was. Planning Commission ordinance where when it's all.
Right there's planning commission.
Requires the building inspector to be at all planning commission meetings, but it's, he's never been there. And then when he, when the board changed the ordinance. And then when he, when the board changed the ordinance last month or whenever that was. He said he wanted two hundred and fifty dollars to come to every meeting in person or a hundred and fifty dollars to come to every meeting by Zoom. But something that needs to get changed, so.
We're not listed at that on the agenda. I don't think we can change the ordinance. We, um, talk about that.
So are we just gonna table?
Having it on.
I think we can, we can just make the ordinance change after the fact. We, we're gonna say. From like motion. Donnie was to. Require him in writing by the time of the posting of, of the meeting and then we would either request him. Uh, in person or by, or by Zoom. And then we would go, follow us with contact and let him know that he had to be either in person or by Zoom at those selected meetings. There's some planning, the last two planning commission meetings lasted like three minutes.
Okay, Paul, so that's the question I got for you. Now, we, we should probably have something, you know, in front of us. In order to recommend and or approve, I, I'm not comfortable just making, uh, a change on it unless we can actually see what needs to be changed. Uh, or are you okay with us just putting this for, I'm.
Well, I think you can make them, I can draft a real simple ordinance change. If the ordinance now says building inspector shall attend a refined commission meeting. You can change it to upon request, building inspector shall. Attend.
So I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to, to modify the, the ordinance. If it states that, uh, the billing or inspectors required to attend planning commission, that the building inspector may. Attend the building, the planning commission meetings upon written request from the, the planning commission and post it on the notice. On the agenda.
No, we're gonna have to give them a certain amount of time.
Well, it's gotta be posted by Thursday, sure, four, so at least they know. At least they know at that point in time. And everybody can look at and say, okay, planning, uh, billing inspectors requested there's something on the agenda that he needs to be there for. And vice versa, if he's requested to be at, uh, the board meeting, it would have to be posted. The same way. So upon request at a village board or planning commission meeting and, and, uh, proper notice is given on the agenda.
Second.
First and second and for the discussion. Give me none on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's wrap that up for next month. And then you can officially pass it and you can sign it and it'll all be done.
Perfect, thank you. Discussion possible approval ordinance. Ordinance amendment ten dash one dash twenty-eight parking prohibited on Churchill Road. Where did this?
Well, um, I've been made aware of a parking issue creating hazard on Churchill Road. Um, and we've been working through and maybe redrafting this amendment or, uh. Amending this ordinance. Chief, would you like to speak on this?
Sure, so since the, uh, the new, uh. Since thirty-five's been redone. It sounds like the state or whoever did it, Core. Didn't put up no parking signs which were previously there on the east side or the west side, um. So, uh, it was brought to my attention, there's cars parking in the travel lane. And people literally have to go left the center to get around. However, there's no, no parking signs there to prevent them from not parking there. The curb's not yellow. So, we looked at our ordinance, our ordinance kind of was drafted with the previous. Um, kind of with the road design. And it says that, uh, on Churchill Road, uh, north of Main Street, nine hundred feet, you can't park. Um, which didn't necessarily reflect what was going on with the church parking on the west side of the road, um. So, okay, the new, the new construction took place. It got narrow in some spots. It sounds like it had to get more narrow in order to accommodate a path. Um, there's really, we reached out to Core, Andrew from Core, and he essentially said, um. It's the village's responsibility to put up the no parking signs. And if they have ordinance in place. You know, it's on them to put the signs up. They can go on certain state signs, but not other signs. Uh, so essentially we. Are essentially looking to amend our ordinance to reflect the no parking in the zones where it shouldn't be no parking for obvious safety reasons. And then erect those signs, uh, by the village. Well, doing this, kind of looking into this a little bit more, we also noticed that the intended parking area. On Churchill in front of the cemetery in front of Saint Anne's, um, isn't really well marked. Um, there's no parking stalls, um, painted on the road. There's no line pushing traffic back towards the center line. Uh, I spent some time sitting there last Friday in the parking lane and there are signs there on the west side. It were coming south on Churchill. And, uh, I'm parked in front of the cemetery and cars are kind of coming up behind, behind me in like last second, like kind of moving over. So it's not a very obvious parking lane at this point. Um, I had the officer on Sunday go out there and kind of sit there and kind of watch with the Saint Anne's traffic for a while. Um, he said that people were coming by at forty plus miles per hour and some, sometimes it's a thirty mile per hour zone. He also talked about them having to go left the center, um, to can kind of get around the people that were exiting their, their vehicles to go to church. There's a lot of driveways in that section too, um, which kind of limit visibility. Uh, so overall, like, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up like an obvious public safety. Kind of a frauder situation that's going out there on Sunday morning. Um, I think the intent was to. Have designated parking like it was previously on the west side of Churchill. Uh, from a public safety perspective, I think there needs to be lines there, whether it's like a dotted line pushing traffic. Back towards a travel lane that's designated, um. Or designated parking spots. Uh, so in addition, in addition to putting up the no parking signs on the east side of the road, I think the west side also needs to be addressed with some type of. Uh, lane markers.
Is that something we could talk to Andrew? I mean, this, or have you talked to Andrew and asked him about, uh, that safety issue that's come up with us? And we, we got a couple of, uh, you know. Maybe they, we would be, they're, they're able to, they still got punch list stuff to, to handle out there. If, if that's something that they would, it would be on them or are they gonna push it onto us? Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how that could work.
I don't know. Um, that's the first I've ever been told that the village could put anything in the state's highway.
Right.
And. Questioning that with some other folks that deal with you right now, um. There's a little bit more of a good sense is that no, you don't, um.
Well, if we passed an ordinance, they would put them up and they would just charge us for them, right?
Yeah. And that's essentially where the conversation is kind of going is, well, yeah, I want to put them up. Have some preliminary authorization to do that and have somebody come by and. Out of the scene and say, get your signs out of there.
Uh, was it Striper plan? Was that a good look at that?
No.
Striping plan? That's why I was asking.
Mentioned it was. If it wasn't straight before for designated parking, they will put it back in the project as a. Seem to make it better.
So I guess the other question would be is, is, there's probably like fifteen to twenty cars that actually fit in that section. And whether or not it's worth it, um, to allow parking. And I get that Saint Anne's lot isn't great. I, I get that people want to park on the church side. Of the road, uh, to prevent crossing that, but it's, currently it's creating like a visibility issue. And arguably a safety issue with, um. The folks who are crossing to get the, the church on Sunday and the folks who are also opening the door into traffic, um, so. The way this, uh, the amended ordinance would read would just prohibit. Any type of parking on Churchill, which I'm not opposed to, but I think there might be some pushback from. Saint Anne folks who have been doing that for years.
Uh, I think that the way this is written, uh, I believe it reflects, um, the. Northerly side. Not the, because there's a separate portion of the, 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 uh, ordinance that does allow for parking on the. On the southerly side or west side of the road. In that, in that ordinance. So this is just addressing the northerly side because it stops at nine hundred and forty feet from the intersection. Going northerly. So if you wanted to address the issue of parking, that would be a separate. Part of the ordinance, the parking ordinance.
Okay.
So, I, I think for all purposes here, uh, and safety wise, I, I've seen it. This is last weekend. I took a photo when I was coming in. I sent it to the, the public safety. Cause it was brought up by several individuals that are living over there. They're worried that somebody, as they're walking that new trail, they see. That people almost get hit, you know, so, um, and it's not, it's not, I don't, I don't know if it's supposed to be parking, but it doesn't look safe from. From the photo that I took. So, I, I would be, um. I would be willing to, like, unless you wanted to make the motion.
The other thing is, is we're gonna talk about the speed level. I mean, it's posted at thirty if they're going forty anyway, so, I mean.
That, that's up to the state, not us, but posted at, and they're gonna do a speed study, is that correct?
Yeah.
So that'll have to be from the state.
And I think if you look at it through the scope of the agenda item, specifically to, I didn't understand or didn't realize initially that's only addressing the northern, northern. So essentially the east side of the road is the only one that's gonna be impacted by this ordinance. I think the point of order would be. Focus on this ordinance first.
Definitely worthwhile for you guys to look at in public safety on the other side and have further conversations, especially with Saint Anne's because. There has been times when they had, um, a couple of funerals when they were parking on both sides of the road. And so even past where, and in the, you know, I mean, Down Raymond and every, or, um. Chockner and everything, you know, just to cover it. So I'd be willing to make a motion. I, I'd like to make a motion to.
Clarification, this does say it's prohibiting on either side of the highway.
Mm-hmm, right. So can I just, why don't, can I go ahead and make motion then? To. Change ordinance ten dash one dash twenty-eight. To then read parking prohibited, no person shall stop, park, or allow any vehicle to stand at any time. On the west side of the highway of Churchill Road, State Highway Thirty-five. Beginning at its intersection with Main Street, State Highway Thirty-five, fence. Northerly for distance of nine hundred and forty feet and all in the village of Somerset, St. Croix. And then, uh, parent two would be no person shall stop, park, or allow any vehicle to stand at any time on the east side of the highway of Churchill Road. Period. And then we can address the west side going forward and maybe change again if that's necessary in the future.
Anybody else have?
So we're taking care of the east side right now so we can start enforcing that.
I'll do a second.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
What is, what is parent two say again?
Um, basically, the person shall stop on the east side. Of the highway of Churchill Road, State Highway Thirty-five.
So.
There's no parking.
No stopping, standing, or parking on the east side from Main Street to the village limits.
We, we could. Should we specify that way? That's fine with me.
Your motion.
Okay, so I'm amending my motion to read then fence a four, hold on. Beginning at its intersection with Main Street, State Highway Thirty-five, to the village limits.
And roll is the one for the west side.
Um. It means the same and it is southern that's.
It would just be changing either side to west side.
Exactly.
And then leave the nine hundred and forty feet. Let's just splitting what's existing into two separate. One for the west side and one for the east side.
Any further discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possible approval of proposed changes to zoning administrator ordinances thirteen dash one dash one seven zero. Thirteen dash one dash one seven one, thirteen dash one dash one seven two. Something that got approved at the village board.
No, that planning commission.
No, that it got. In order to adding the zoning administrator to the planning commission got approved at the village board.
Right.
Four months ago or whatever it was. And then now this got approved by the planning commission and it was up. A couple of meetings ago to get approved and Caleb said he wanted more information, more time, so hopefully everybody's ready to. Move forward in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've also extended the thirty days to sixty days there for administration.
Yes, we sat down with. Tim Delonge. Me, Bob, Tasia. And Lane Belter. Couple other people from the planning commission and, uh, went through who already does what and we just updated the ordinances to reflect.
Bob, are you okay with this, this, this stuff as it's coming through already? We're gonna change the twenty eighteen to twenty-four months, uh, after issue of a permit.
Yeah, uh. You have any other questions on that, Caleb? And I know you had, no, you wanted time to review it a little more.
Final with this. I just.
You got a motion?
I just have one question maybe to clarify this, so. Someone has a question on zoning. Who do they call? I mean, you can't call the plan commission. You call the plan commission there.
Uh, they would call me. This is more a concern with enforcement, uh, CUPs, um, anything property. Uh, we have a lot of gray area because we don't have a designated twenty-nine minutes center. Sometimes it's the police chief, times it's a clerk, at times it's me, but other times. We don't know who it is. You walk onto someone's property and say, you know, clean your stuff up. It's my responsibility.
This would clarify that, right?
Yes.
They would say, okay, now we know whose responsibility, right?
Those complaints would come with, and you can't so conditionally permit anything that would come through the sign.
Called and said somebody storing. Whatever on the property and they're not supposed to be, then that would, I don't know, come, I think they should. They would have a CFP in front of them, address property or. And take whatever actually they needed to, to. What's all?
This, this came out of a meeting where Lane Belter, he's been on the planning commission twenty plus years, whatever. Uh, somebody was building a building over there next to another building and they kind of laughed because, well. They, uh, they didn't follow the conditional use permits that the last building, why would they do it now? And he said, there's, there's no teeth in anything we do. We apply the condition, give a, well, we, uh, in. They give up, we give them a conditional use permit, but there's no enforcement or no teeth behind it. Well, then working with the building inspector, then if, if we have a conditional use permit. The building inspector will not, uh, give them a certificate of occupancy until.
The issue is remedy.
Until it's the issue of remedy. So then there, it gives the village some teeth and some enforcement to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to, what they're saying they're, they're going to do.
Well, that would kind of take care of some of the issues that we had with previous developers then, right? Cause now you have a, you have this, uh, enforcement. Um, at mechanism that wasn't in place before. Cause I did see and hear something like with water, uh, adequacy, proposed water drainage, drainage facilities and, and such would be, you know.
And, and this, this was at that meeting, it was gone through that, I think he emailed it to me, the ordinance where it says. You know, it's on small villages, they typically don't have it, but you could, the village president could either. Appoint a person to do it or could appoint a board or a committee to do it. So that's why. Um, under Bob's recommendation, it went to the planning commission, to be the zoning administrator, to be able to enforce things that the village has never been able to enforce ever.
I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, section fifteen. One dash one seven zero, one seven one, one seven two. One seven three, one seven four, one seven five, and one seven six as presented.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Same sign. Motion carries, discussion possible approval, municipal prosecuting attorney. And this is something uh we had four extensions on last time for some reason. For the conflict of interest and maybe before we go, we can. If I can ask Paul, when, when should people have a no vote? When should they abstain? You can only say, I, my understanding, within some kind of conflict of interest, you can either have yes vote or no vote or no exceptions.
I think there's, there's a difference between abstaining and recusing. And then recusing is, you know, if you have a direct conflict with something. You shouldn't be involved in the discussion or the vote. And and that's refusal. Abstaining, you can abstain for any reason. Whether you want to make a decision or not. Some people use it essentially as a no vote. Where they don't want to go on record by voting no. Because you have to have enough affirmative votes to pass. So.
That's why it did pass in the, in the, in the last election or the last meeting is because it was a four abstain, which would be considered no vote and three.
Yeah, because you need, you need the majority of the people there to pass and there wasn't a majority. There was only three affirmative votes, so effectively they're no vote.
And this is for my recommendation of Mr. Nemec or. Our uh village attorney to switch over from Angela Olson. With up her rate like two hundred and fifty an hour, you switching over to Deanne Cole. Who was a hundred and eighty five, I think, and I were.
It's a hundred and eighty five per municipal, if it all gets appealed to such a court, then it's two twenty five. What's it?
So what's the players? We had four things, I I got, did that guys got concerned with that or?
What was the real concern of?
Two fifty though, raising the rates and driving our, our budget, you know.
So it was two hundred, is it two hundred and fifty an hour in circuit court?
It was, it was originally.
I don't remember.
It was originally one fifty and we budgeted one fifty and the judge budgeted one fifty. No, went to two hundred fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, yes. And so we said, whoa, and so uh that. It was recommended by the municipal court system to that they define somebody much more within their budget. Hence the, hence the uh request here.
And the recommendation for the person also came from the municipal court judge. He works with this person, he's also the judge in North Hudson and works with her, I think she's outstanding.
He does so much, he has green balls and. All blend.
This would fall in more in line of what we established for a budget for the municipal court system.
And Ms. Olson wasn't coming doing her own stuff and sending a newbie who they weren't very happy with.
So, what do you guys think? But it says essentially falls on, on y'all.
Oh, right. Well, let's get this thing moving. I'll make a motion to bring the municipal prosecuting attorney. Deanne Cole. As presented in her agreement.
When does it affect us? Right away?
Effectively immediately, it was supposed to go in February first.
I'll second.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Thanks for the extra time.
Uh discussion, village trustee code of conduct. So I think this one ended up back on here, it was all though, it was tabled at the. One, it was tabled and then it just never got back on the agenda. Um so it should have been discussed again. So nothing has changed on here. I think the only thing that has really come to my mind since that time is that. Um we might want to start um. A ethics board.
Well, Brandon, I believe uh we did have significant discussion about that and um that's where the cross through and stuff was. My recommendation uh to, basically, a lot of this stuff was already covered in, in state statute. And or violation of law. So I guess if you're asking which one we should adopt, I'm not, I'm not in favor of adopting any, any type of um. Code of conduct that violates uh violates state or federal law. So I don't know where you want to go with that, that's why we talked about it, but I.
So I wasn't the, so Caleb had asked to table it at the meeting, it wasn't I, we asked to table it, so.
All the stuff like this exists in other boards. Ask Paul if this exists in other boards.
Okay.
Some do have ethics committees. Um some of that, you know, some types of codes, I guess I have some issues with some of these. Um and I, I think Donnie raised some legitimate ones, you know. The residency requirement is covered by state election law, the village can't change state election law. You know, number one, I don't see any issue with that. Number three, I don't see an issue with that. Number four. You know, withholding people's pay essentially. Um I think is a potential violation of Reginald laws. So I would have some issues with that. Um number five, I think, two things, one, you know, you you can't be a convicted felon and and serve on the board. Um so that's covered by state statute. The other thing, and just reading it, many just need to be clarified. Because this could also apply to someone serving on a plan commission or somebody serving on a committee. That's maybe a non-elected position. Um and it doesn't say whether the felony is related. You know, to anything that that committee would do. Well, even though if you hire people, you know, allow them to work for it. If they have a felony conviction, you have to be careful, you just can't say, he's a felon, we're not hiring anybody. You have to look at what that relates to and whether that relates to the duty of the job. So maybe some, some clarification on that for non-board members. Well, those are my comments, they were, I guess.
Does anybody want to make a motion or can we move on?
It's just discussing like on December.
So, okay. Convenient a closed session pursuant to a stats eighteen point three five for an app. Considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where. Paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation. Of any person referred to in such histories or data. Or involved in such problems of of investigations, the village attorney and building inspector in pursuit of stats nineteen. Eight five, parent one, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds. Or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. For the economic development of.
Here's a big cut, please.
Uh going to close session, we'll call Donnie.
Who made the motion? I'll second it. You moved to it?
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay, Chris second, Donnie.
I.
Close session. Caleb.
I.
Myself, yes. And then Josh, if you want to be in a closed session, you have to zoom in, you'll be able to see it, see that, see that.
Yep, so I uh say yay to go into closed session, but I am going to have to bug out. So you guys have a good night, I'm not going to be able to go into closed session.
Thank you, Josh.
Hey, Josh.
All right, convene session. To reconvene. I gotta fly the recording tomorrow. Good.
Yeah.
What we're doing, what we're doing. Re-reconvene to open session and there's nothing to act on. So uh. The jurors are second, first and second, Chris. Uh Chris Marino second for the discussion. All in favor?
I, I.
Oppose, same sign. Uh meeting ends at eight twenty six P M. Oh, that's too bad, nice job.